...field township at the corner of Carini and Hayden. The guy has, on the corner, has a post in the ground and he's got two split rails going one each direction at the corner.
It's a decorative.
Yeah, decorative thing. That's probably not fine, correct?
Right.
And I'm not, I don't know whether that's good or bad.
June Field and Sharon, June Field and Sharon, same way.
They have a corner fan.
Unless they're side and rear, then that's a side and rear.
Yeah.
Yeah, we didn't need that.
That's a side and rear.
So what is anybody thinking about being acceptable? No chain link if we can do that.
Yeah.
Treat different kinds of fences differently, but I'll see about that. The uses that are here, electric charge or bark wire, razor wire are related to safety. Separating out exactly what type of fence is or is not permitted, I think you probably did, but I'll need to check to check with them.
Well, I, you know, personally, I would, you know, I don't like the idea of fences in front of your yard. The youths, that youth that's described, the, you know, Mrs. Raymond daughter, she's not even here to defend herself. You know, that's, that's, that's a decorative thing. And, you know, it's not used to separate the stank, it's just there. You can walk right around it if you want. Ju's use, you know, screen for screening trash cans wholly appropriate use.
But you gotta be careful. You gotta be careful with just wa- with the quote of just walking around it because if I put a fence up right next to my sidewalk and just keep my driveway open so I can pull my car into my driveway.
Yeah, well, you know, that's why, where, why, what I'm thinking about is that we've gotta either put a setback, limit the three feet, put a setback, something. Because, you know, I'm kind of Beth and the, you know, and I don't know, is it different in the A B section, historical section than the rest? Brian, you've heard kind of our collective thoughts here. Do you think you can craft something to insert here that?
Oh, I don't know what, I don't know what we ever come to a consensus on what we're like.
I don't think there's been a consensus for each.
I mean, if you put a setback on it, then nobody can screen anything on the, I mean, if you put a setback, then what setback would be acceptable? A number five feet, eight feet, something from the sidewalk or from the right way. I mean, you just have to pick a number out of here, which is difficult.
That's fine.
There's lots of ways, lots of holes around where it's like non-included or decorative. I mean, there's gonna be different interpretations of what decorative is. Like you said, if you have a fence that goes all the way around the front yard, if there's a five-foot section or side yard, basically, some of these bushes, it's not closing the front yard.
But I'm thinking, why don't you wore it so many foot off the property?
Define it, but there's, I mean, it's gonna open up more interpretation for a challenge. You know, anybody that wants to have it.
Like this is the house.
Trying to work their way through.
Two units here.
I don't see a way that you can play right to accomplish what you're trying to accomplish.
And then.
Again.
I don't know how difficult it is to go to the VCA for a variance for people who have fences in the front yard. Is it decorative?
What if we did no fences in the front yard with the exception of those used for screening?
Trash receptacles and then if they wanna go decorative, they can go to the VCA.
But then. Yeah, so I mean, the screening thing, if it's, if you allow it, but then we're gonna get somebody eighteen or a fence in the front yard.
For metal trash cans right there.
Like post office, post office.
And then they're gonna throw one piece of garbage in it and I have two units.
That's what it is. It's just an enclosure.
Yeah.
And it's all open except for the sides.
All right.
Whoa.
It's raining, let's have one conversation. How's about?
Okay.
There's been a suggestion here that this thing that youth describing is not a fence. And a simple way strikes me to deal with this is to just eliminate fence as you're suggesting. Put a definition for a, if you use screening enclosure that could be within and, you know, define it as, you know, six feet.
So many feet off the building, not to extend more than.
Yeah, it could be no further than, you know, six feet from the front of the building.
I think that's a lot.
And four, four feet high?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause most garbage cans is not.
Yeah, they're only, you know, there's even the, even the big rolling ones, maybe they're four feet high.
I think.
Call it, call it four feet high, call it something, define it as that and just take front yard out of the whole fence thing. That seems to be a reason.
Yeah, because it's a totally different category and in this village, we have a need for things like this throughout.
Does that sound like a reasonable compromise?
Add a definition to the definitions chapter for refuse screen enclosure.
Uh-huh.
And then I think you can get rid of the difference between the three foot and the four feet. You say all fences are four feet.
Yeah, because.
You don't need the seventy-five percent transparency.
But you're saying take, get rid of the, get rid of it of?
You need the transparency requirements for the side yards if you don't want to have privacy fences in the side yard. Reason that exists is cause if you don't have it, then you have a privacy fence that can come off the front corner of your house, which is considered behind the front property line. I mean, the front setback line comes off the side of your house and then if two houses do that together, you've got this kinda continuous wall between the buildings, your house, privacy fence, privacy fence, house.
Can you address that through the materials section?
Well, this accomplishes it unless you want to say that nobody can have a chain link fence anywhere.
That would be my choice, but.
And I think there are few too many of them.
Yeah. Yeah. I think you're about seventy-five years late.
I think, I think having it here eliminates people from having tall, four-foot tall fences that become more like solid structures. Fifty percent allows for a pretty significant amount of wood. But.
Well, if you're gonna do a fence on the side, I don't see any seam between three feet and four feet. So if you wanted to be all less than seventy-five percent open.
It doesn't matter to me. This is the, this is the way that the county regulates it and the way that we bring it for other villages. Nobody's actually discussed the difference between a three and a four foot and the openness requirement. I don't, you know, I don't think there's a big difference between zero.
So Fredo, let me get this straight. You're, you're still thinking that there should be a requirement against fences in the front yard?
Yes. I'm saying no fence in the front yard. No. Fences and their walls can be located on the side of your yard and straight front from nine eleven, eight one.
Let's get back to the definition of the refuse screen enclosure just real quick. So I got four feet high, but you had some other.
You know, then eight, six feet?
Six feet, four feet, actually. Like I said, whatever you can.
Well, you've gotta be able to kinda get in there and turn and park it, you know?
Yeah, also have them more kinda large.
Yeah, if you've got, I mean, if you've got, if you've got two units, right, and they've got an enclosure here, you know, two cans per unit isn't unreasonable and, you know, you gotta be able to kinda get in and get to them. So, you know, I think six feet's reasonable for that. You've got room that you can actually walk past the one, get to the other and.
That's within six feet of the front of the house?
You should be allowed it.
If it's garbage, now, I'm in those conditions. I go, I have the one in front of it.
I can get the one behind it.
Behind it.
Yeah.
But that's.
Within six feet of the front of the house.
Yeah.
I, I, I don't agree with the fact that we're trying to limit fences in the front yards at all.
Well, you've had in A and B blocks back in the beginning of this code. Because when I go to that area and find fencing in the front yards.
It's fine.
In the places. That's fine. Because it was a regulation at that time.
But the purpose of it, Jason, was that Green Hills was characterized by green open space and a green belt. And that's just the, that was the character of Green Hills.
Sure.
And that's what makes it, you know, a nice place to live. So.
Anybody putting up a fence if I, I was checking with the manager, they've gotta have zoning approval anyway to put up a fence, correct?
Yeah.
So hopefully that will, whatever we decide on will prohibit or lessen the likelihood that we'll have something that's not conforming.
I, but I just think, and I'll play, I always play that way, ever get, everything I say, even if I agree with it, I play the other side. I still think that it, it should be brought up to public debate.
All of this is.
Well, I'm just making sure, but I'm just, but I'm just making sure that, that the things that we're discussing are specially added to, to, to a point to bring up because.
You keep it a list.
I was gonna say whoever wants to bring it up.
Keep the list.
Yeah.
So, you know.
Okay, we have that.
Yeah, adding that definition.
You're gonna add that.
Then also be added somewhere else, probably some exemption somewhere that says that, cause the regulations about it being four feet high and six feet from the house is not something that you should put into a definition. It should be a regulation somewhere in a chapter.
Right.
Cause we don't regulate with definitions. So we'll define what it is and then we'll have it added somewhere as a regulation, either in this section or somewhere else where there's projections that are permitted in the front yard. I think there's someone for the porches and awnings or something.
That would be inappropriate.
Add this to that area, that's an exemption in the front yard.
Okay.
Max of six feet.
For me, I'm trying to define height, just throw out some language that might work. For residential uses, no fence, one wall located in the side yard shall exceed four feet in height and shall have an open face area of no less than fifty percent. That means it can be a wood picket fence if you want. Anything above fifty percent is okay. But you just don't want opaque fences or solid fences on the side yard that, I mean, that's what, that's why this is written.
Right.
And then, so they.
The idea is you typically don't have a four-foot picket fence, you usually have a three-foot picket fence. I think, I, the reason that this was written, I think, is that three feet is a picket fence, four foot is some other type of fence. And if you're gonna do something other than that, then it needs to be more open. And again, because you can easily see over three feet in height, so if it's more opaque, then you can still see into the back harder. It doesn't enclose anything. Four foot tall, fifty percent, you 'll probably see it over and it will kind of enclose the yard. That's the, that's the reason the regulations were written that way, separated between three and four feet, different opacities for different heights.
But if you, if you say it can exceed four feet and cannot exceed four, what is it? Be less than fifty percent open, so maybe you can still build a three-foot fence if you want.
If you wanna make, make it four feet and fifty percent, then it's easy, it's an easy change to the text.
You can still leave the chain link.
I'm sorry, I'm not trying with that. Say that again, Beth. What, what would be the rationale?
Shall not exceed four feet and shall have an open face area of no less than fifty percent. So it can be up to four feet high and it can be anything fifty percent or more.
So you're saying if we struck the three feet portion, we wouldn't be any less or more restrictive?
No.
We, would we just?
It can be up to four feet high.
It'd be less restrictive.
Yeah, it's less restrictive. You're not differentiating between three and four. You say anything up to four is okay.
Less than fifty percent and then strike from more when constructed to a height of not more than four feet, blah, blah, blah. So strike the rest of that sentence. And fences located in the rear yard lines at six feet height, period. So.
It's just simplifying it to be more open.
Um, let's talk about fences. If we have development in Green Hills, when, and I don't remember the, the details on this, but when we had the, you had expansion at the Alzheimer Center, the Hikers wanted to put a privacy fence there and in fact did. Is there any, would they be in compliance with the current change that we're talking about? Cause.
Yeah, six-foot privacy fence in a rear yard.
But that's a side yard. For, that, that goes into their side yard, I think.
But it, but it doesn't come all the way up to the front?
No, it just goes to the.
It just comes to the back.
Front corner, the front corner or the proper of the, of the house. So that would be a side yard where that starts, right? And I don't, I, I don't recollect whether we approved all of that in one shot or not or whatever. Are we setting ourselves up where we've gotta get a variance or, or approve a variance or?
Well, we can't, some stuff out of existence, can't we?
No, no.
That's, that's.
I'm, I'm thinking from a future standpoint, if something happens at the shopping center and there's residential property close by, are people gonna wanna do the same thing that was permitted over there? And should we address it in the code now or should we?
Well, I, I say, I don't think so. I think it's, leave it where it sits, six-foot fences in backyards. And if somebody wants a variance, they come to the VCA and discuss it.
That's what was done. I was on VCA at the time.
And, and it was a variance for that? Okay. I just didn't recollect.
Right.
You would show what you're going to do, get it approved, if it's, be acceptable and move on.
Sure, okay.
Cause I got in a big hassle.
Okay, let's go.
I'm glad you were on it, Wes.
Brian.
No, but it was, it was discussed at that time. The, I think the maximum change is the setbacks. Page sixty-nine, page sixty-nine, minimum side yard was a percentage, fairly complicated percentage to figure out for every side yard. The change was made to make called side yard setbacks five feet in the, this is the R one. Five-foot side yards for single-family units, I mean, single-family detached dwellings. All other uses, side yard would be fifteen feet. All other uses would be the other things that are permitted, like clubs or churches, public land, parks and playgrounds, all the religious places of worship, educational institutions. Anything else would be fifteen, right?
I, I'm sorry. Billy, I have a question about this. And I, I've, I've thought this up a couple of times and that is whether the yard requirements that you're setting up, you know, the use of it actually fits the pattern of development that you have.
Yes, they do. We did a analysis of various properties throughout the village, various different areas of the village and all the blocks. And that was where the five-foot came from. We specifically did the analysis before we chose the number that they needed.
Brian, I'm talking about the, how about the front yard as well?
The front yard is the same as it is currently. We can change the front yard then.
It's thirty-five feet.
Right.
Okay, and it says not less than forty, so then thirty-five feet, right?
Say that again.
The, the minimum front yard is thirty-five feet on the R one. Is the J, or is the J block a R one?
Yeah.
Okay, because today I went in these cages and measured a bunch of front yards in the J section and almost all of them were less than thirty feet. A lot of them were less than thirty-five feet.
From where, based on what?
From the, from the sidewalk. That's where the front yard starts, is the sidewalk. So from the sidewalk to the front of the house, many of them were twenty-three, twenty-four.
We didn't aim on a side yard setback because we weren't changing the intersection.
Okay, well, this is an opportunity.
To, to, I mean.
To make it fit what you actually have. Because if you build anything new, it's not gonna fit with what's there. And now maybe you don't have anything new, but.
What if, what if a house was destroyed by a fire? It'd have to be documented, informed the, the new code. But all this stuff is.
Yeah, well, I don't wanna grand wish where they can't build back on the same foundation.
Are you sure that, where exactly were you when you were measuring that off? Like, did you?
June Field.
I'm, yeah, I'm kinda thinking about my first house on June Field, which is at June Field and January Court. I don't know if that's thirty.
I mean, we picked a, we picked a bunch of properties in it just from what we measured because we did actually look at the number for the front yard. We didn't, purpose changing it because we weren't changing it. They were mostly thirty or more. There were thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-eight. Maybe one, maybe twenty-seven.
Maybe it needs changed to thirty, but.
You, you said you found some at twenty-three.
Twenty-three?
What, did you have the addresses?
No, I just went through the district and, do you want me to get the addresses?
What, what kind of tool did you use? I'm just curious. What kind of, a real tape?
No, the tape is mapping.
Oh, okay. I wouldn't go that then. I wouldn't use that.
Why? That's what, that's how, that's.
I know, but I, I still wouldn't use that as, as your model. That's like using Zillow to get rental properties or house valuations. You can't use Zillow.
Okay, not at all. I mean, if you do like a dozen or twenty.
Well, well, I, I, I mean, I can do a couple real fast with a real tape. I'm just saying that, that, those aren't, those aren't always accurate. I wouldn't, I wouldn't trust them. I would use a real measuring. And I, I could get that done tomorrow. That's not a big deal. I could, I could, I live on Jewel and June Field. If you tell me to do twenty, I'll, I'll, my boys grab hundred-foot tapes and run down the street doing.
Oh, fantastic.
That's not a big deal. I mean.
I was gonna suggest twenty-five instead of thirty-five because almost all of the existing properties would conform with the twenty-five based on cages. And some of them I measured were like twenty-three and twenty-four. So maybe cages is off a little bit. So.
Cages is never accurate.
Okay.
There you go.
Okay.
Well, I just, I'm just saying, I wouldn't, I work on computers and those systems all the time and you can't trust them until you get out and do the field work. That's right. So I, I'll do them. I'll, I'll run twenty of them. Okay, I'll do twenty of them. I'll go lunch break, does nothing.
Okay, well, the thing is, you know, again, going back into the historical area of the village, the majority of those are twenty-five, twenty-six foot side yards. There's no thirty-foot, forty-foot deep.
I would imagine, there's a building on Flanders that I doubt is even twenty-five.
Right.
I was gonna say, Flanders and Falcon, I'm, I'm not sure those are thirty-five.
I don't think they're thirty-five and I think.
You know where to measure from?
I think the village.
Curve line, sidewalk line.
You got, you got a property line.
Is it the right, the center of the road or the, the right of which is how far?
Usually the back of the sidewalk, but not always.
Okay.
It depends on how it's defined in the code.
That's how I was thinking. It's from the right away, from the right away line.
And that could be back.
Sidewalk line or not. It's not from the sidewalk, it's from the right away.
I would, uh.
To the front line of the.
Well, that's a big difference.
You know, there are some places that's small. I mean, twenty-five feet seems like a reasonable number. You know, with the house hanging down on Cromwell, I knew, you know, from looking at the, the survey, we were non-conforming because it wasn't fifty feet back from the sidewalk. And I don't know if there's some special zoning, but there was a variance granted from those people built that house in nineteen fifty-seven because it wasn't fifty feet back. Those were the regulations at that time, right? I mean, one of the practical standpoint, if we're gonna see any significant residential construction, it's most likely gonna be in a PUD, right?
Yeah.
And it's not gonna.
Which is, which is, let it work.
But do you want to get the pattern of building?
Or you can say, or you can say any new structure has to match adjacent properties for that. So if you have two houses here, my house burns down, I have to meet the adjacent properties.
Okay, we're getting hung up on this. I'm getting really, really hungry. And it's on page sixty-nine of one hundred and seventy-three. So, you know, we can spend a lot of time hashing over twenty-five or thirty-five feet. We've gotta have a number to go forward. Okay, because, you know.
Why do we have to have a number? We, we could also write it to match adjacent properties.
Well, if you.
Does that, does that, does that cover, does that cover if me, Glenn and you have a house, my house burns down, but I gotta go to, to some number? Or can it say to match adjacent properties? I have to match that setback, that minimum setback to, to adjacent properties?
Well, most of your plans have got setback lines dotted on it. Okay. I'm not talking out here on a farm someplace. I'm talking about in villages. Because I have to meet setbacks all the time in putting up buildings. Right?
But the flat doesn't supersede the zoning resolution. The zoning resolution will supersede whatever's on the flat.
Yeah, the plat, the, the, the lines on the flat came from whatever zone was existing when that flat was drawn, right?
That's right.
But again, if they change, then the zoning will supersede. So.
Twenty-five to thirty-five.
Twenty-five, I'm fine with that.
And the only thing about. Twenty-five would be that there, there would be people who'd be able to add off to the front of their house.
And inhale, it'd be, uh.
People that have a thirty or thirty-five foot setback currently will be able to.
That's what I'm saying. Can you use adjacent properties?
Well, I think any additions or any variances, should something burn down and you wanna change that, that would be a time for a variance.
There actually, there is on page forty-seven or somewhere thereabouts. Page forty-eight, maybe. Average depth of front yards of any residence district where the average depth of at least two existing front yards on lots within a hundred feet of the line question within the same block. Required depth of front yard in such a lot may be modified. In such cases, modifications shall not be less than the average depth of the existing front yards on the two lots immediately adjoining, as like you're saying. Provided the depth is not less than ten feet or greater than fifty feet. And it says May, so if you want to meet the minimum front yard requirement, you can, or you can choose to line your house up with the ones on the other side of you. So that would supersede the front yard setback. In any case, no matter what the number is, it's allowed you to build whoever is next to you.
Fill us the out.
Right.
Good.
And since it says May, if you've got two people that have fifty-foot front yard setbacks, but you want yours to be thirty-five, you can build yours at thirty-five. It doesn't, won't result in you exceeding your minimum requirement if you don't want to.
Okay.
Which is always the problem. If there's, you know, two houses that are really far setback in the street, unlike any of the other houses on the street, then it, you know, passive, you setback more if you make that, the regulations say shall instead of May.
All right, we're up to chapter eleven, the multifamily.
Now, we're still, it's front yard setback. We decide twenty-five, thirty-five.
So we can leave it at thirty-five, given.
I'm fine leaving it at thirty-five, given, given the other piece.
The fact that it can be a minimum of ten.
Yes.
Okay.
What's your professional opinion?
That section, you can use that section to accomplish.
All right, so that.
In a block, you wanna.
That sounds good.
Even when you said.
Okay.
All right.
Sounds good.
What's this one thing that's not changing? Five, five and fifteen for side yards and thirty feet for single-family rear yards or fifty feet for other uses. The other uses setbacks are pretty significant. Those would relate to churches and schools, which have obviously massive setbacks already. The residential, single-family structures, one again, was based on our analysis using cages of what the existing setbacks were in various properties throughout the village, in the , throughout the Arvin district. So, most of them again have rear yards. The rear yards, the side yards, you don't get the average. Most of the units, single-family units have a rear yard of thirty feet or more and the five-foot side yard setback's pretty general. Like it's usually five and eight is the way that it worked out. So with the percentage of it's currently existing, so then five feet should work. The R two district did the same thing. The multifamily district, except their setbacks are less. With the exception of single-family, I mean, I see why there should be a difference between single-family and R two versus the R ones. This front yard setback is the same. The multifamily setback was reduced from thirty to twenty for both multifamily and two-family, again, to address the fact that most of them are not less than thirty feet from the right way line. Most of them are twenty.
I'm gonna look at the ten.
Yeah. Some of them may very well be. You know, the question I've got here, single-family dwellings. You know, we've got some of them in line with, you know, I've seen a couple of them I have now. I've got a single-family dwelling that's more or less in line with the multifamily. And it's in, I'm guessing that's still the R two. And it's in, I'm guessing that's still the R-two. So do we wanna, I mean, is thirty-five, I, I, you know, I would argue that why make it different within the R-two? Than, uh, than having the same R-line in R-two.
Well, it'd be easy then, all dwelling, residential dwellings show a, show a front yard setback of twenty feet. Just eliminate the A, B, C. Just have a A and a B for all other uses. Or I mean, we can just say thirty-five to twenty also. We leave it the way that it is. I don't know if that messes up any references or not somewhere else, but.
Questions, comments, anybody?
All right. James have the twenty feet then?
Yes.
Please. All right, the side yard setback, around page seventy-four, pretty complicated. Um, trying to differentiate between outside side yards and interior side yards. For units that have a property line running down the middle. Currently, there's a side yard setback. Doesn't address the fact that there are property lines running down the middle of a building. In the R-two district, we're trying to address that to allow that to occur. Where you have one-one unit where people wanna own it separately, you actually split the property down, some kind of interior wall or party wall. Uh, these regulations would do that. Let's say I have a zero foot setback if it's an interior property line. Five-foot side yard setback if it's on the exterior. All right. Rear setback thirty-five feet for everything. It looked like, again, that was what it is currently for most properties.
It's almost seven-thirty. Are we gonna be able to get through this?
Uh, I'll read it.
Okay.
I don't know.
Okay. Have we covered the most of the, the critical issues that we were?
I think so. There's some minor changes to the B-one and B-two district, B-three um, district that you changed. Doesn't look like in the the Village Center district, I don't know if everybody has seen all of these changes related to coming here was to try and classify what kind of things could go where. Um, because we were using general terms related to retail and office, and there's no other place where these, what is considered retail was what's considered office. Was located, and we tried to add a list of those things.
But Brian, the only thing I didn't see in there that would be in there was the educational uses, the community buildings and all, so should we add that to this? That's each high school. I mean, you know, other than, I don't think they fall under government and community, so.
I think that was the idea, government offices and related uses was.
The community school.
Right.
Why would, would that be?
Well, related to government offices.
The, the community buildings.
The community.
Related, similar uses.
Part mark, this is the Village Center description, so educational uses weren't listed. I didn't know they needed.
I, I'm thinking they do need to be because, just because we have an existing school in the community building, doesn't mean there could be another construction.
Right.
And we would need to have that application.
Okay. Schools, churches? The schools, education.
Houses of worship.
Places of worship.
Places of worship. Right.
Okay. Um, hold, hold on. In the Village Center, do we want places of worship?
Well, we don't know that. They would have to, if, if, you don't know what is going to go in that whole bill.
I would say no. I would say no.
Is the, is the church in the Village Center?
No.
It's in, it's in, I think it's.
No, it's not. It's.
It's outside of the.
I've stopped, so I'm prepared.
Okay.
I think it's common.
I thought it was, that's why.
I'm down here. I don't need to.
It is.
This is the.
It is.
Yeah.
You've got a church in there, right?
It is a place of worship.
And it is a school, and it was a school, and a place of worship.
And Brian, you know, I guess I was mentioning to you before, I'm confused because if we still have our B-one and our B-three and the Village Center, is the Village Center basically an overlay then of those?
No, the B-three is over here. The B-one is the one that would go away. Um, no, the B-one would still be in your code. You could apply it somewhere if anybody wanted to, I mean, use it if you needed it.
Oh, okay.
For some property, but it, it, it's acceptable for you to have a district in your code that's not mapped.
Okay, so what, the map would actually change. It wouldn't say B-one there anymore.
Right. Right, it'd say a B-C.
Okay, that helps me a lot. Okay.
Uh, this map must not be accurate then.
Well, that's the existing zoning map, right?
Okay, all right, all right. That's where I was confused as to whether O-L-R was in the Village Center or not.
Yeah, she's got that Village Center map too. Right there.
Got it.
Okay, I, I don't know if anybody else has any comments about the, any of the changes to the Village Center district.
I thought they were, they were good because the setbacks were adjusted to reflect more of this there.
Greenbelt district for some reason showing up is being completely changed. I don't know why. I think it just got moved. I'm not sure. This came, this came from the law director?
Yeah, exactly, I think.
You had a charter or something? Yeah. Oh, that's right.
Can't change, so I'm gonna go back.
Think they're back.
I got listed as new chapter, so maybe.
Right, guys, how it stands now is how we have to, I think, as we do.
Okay.
I think anything major changed here, this'll be where you get to the board of sending appeals stuff. Probably the most major thing that's coming up. Most of this is just, this is where the planning commission regulations come from, so the term planning commission will be changed in a number of places. Edit a section on prohibited signs to the sign chapter.
On page?
Uh, one forty-three. Pole signs, portal signs, snipe signs, and deodorant signs. Usually get that.
One forty-three. Does this signage change real estate signage?
No, that's an exception.
No, that's an exception, okay.
So, very, you know.
Okay. Did you check that?
No, absolutely.
I know the city Hamilton banned them.
I'm real good about reliving my signs.
Well, the city Hamilton banned them.
Well, no, I mean.
Not allowed, you're not allowed signage saying, oh, the house. Done, yeah.
And Brian, one thing I, I didn't see that I really heard through, is there's some kind of section that would talk about that once, once a youth leaves the premises, making giant toys. That they have so long to get it down. If, if it's in here, I didn't see it, like, you know, yeah.
Signs.
Or, or we could take it down and put all the taxes or, you know, just.
You need an amelioration, ameliorization clause for that. Something that I've never dealt with before.
Okay.
Typically, it's the cabinet. If there's a large cabinet, I'll probably pull the cabinet, it needs to be removed. Then it has to comply, and if they keep the same face on that cabinet, they take the face off, put your face up maintain its non-pulley status. Unless you have some other kind of clause that gives them a certain number years. Another non-conforming chapter. Might be something that you used to.
Do we do it as, or is it in ordinance?
I don't know.
Why don't you pose that question to Mr. Ford?
I think that's.
That'd be the.
Right.
Yeah, ask him about amelioration, see if he thinks it's something. Yeah, I'm not.
Working on it.
That's what, that's the legal term for giving people a period of time to comply with the regulations.
Okay.
And that's, that's the legal term, so there's lots of case law on that topic. I'm not familiar with what requirements you have to follow to be able to impose on, I've seen it get voted on in a, or a, a building, um, shot down.
Okay, thanks.
Trying to find the busy head stuff just to point that out. Page one sixty. There are, is this the, also the board of sending appeals?
No.
District?
That's the same group, okay.
Anybody else on that?
Oh, yeah.
We have two, okay. The, um, there's case law in Ohio related to, um, Case versus Duncan. They're called the Duncan factors and, um, there's a, there's a list of factors that you need to consider, uh, when you're considering variances. Um, you need to figure out if it is a use variance or if it is a, um, area variance. Simple way to determine that is, you know, an office using a residential district, that's a use variance. That shouldn't be granted ever, whether it's on the second change. Um, and an area variance would be, I mean, a front yard setback because the area required, my front yard is thirty feet and I want twenty-five. So, um, those are the two simple ones. The gray areas are, you know, like an accessory use in the front yard. It's not a use variance, or is that an area variance that says? Anyway, there, there are some gray areas and it's not really ever been defined, um, but there is a difference between the two, and there are different standards that you're required by law to consider for the two. So if you don't have them, um, your law director felt that, um, you were opening yourself up to challenge if you were considering the wrong factors for any given variance.
Okay.
Fair enough.
We got him in there. We're deferring his legal expertise.
All right.
Like you've got spelling error in twenty-two point four, B-two, A. What color do you got?
That's page one sixty. In the case, that's, there should be an S in there instead of a C-A-E.
Where is it?
Oh, there it is.
Under section A, fourth line. Felcheck, didn't catch that.
It probably did actually, you know, but it's already underlined and red like it would normally.
Yeah.
Good point.
And what we accept the changes, we'll go back there and look for the spelling errors. Um, I believe that's the, that's in it.
Okay, are we going to set a date now for the public hearing?
Uh, hold on.
Say this, but, um, but I have mentioned this in the rules and regulations to adapt it to, you know, to current powers and procedures for the African historic preservation division. And, um, again, I realized that it probably needs to be in here. It probably needs to be in chapter twenty-two, which lists your powers and duties. Right? Here. I mailed this to, um, by the way, and I, we reviewed this once before, I thought. And the only changes that I made to it since I was looking at it are, um, there is two pages, article ten under inventory of historic properties, okay? And the inventory shall be recorded on Ohio Historic Inventory, Ohio Archaeological Inventory forms or forms compatible with all these continuous inquiry.
Which, where are you at? I'm sorry.
Article, article ten, there's two pages.
Actually, yours is right.
There, I inserted two, two things, section three and section four. But now that I'm working chapter twenty-two for administration, I think that these changes will be transposed into chapter twenty-two, which describes your, your powers and duties and your procedures. So, I'm sorry. Would you be behind?
Um, I don't know. I don't.
I, I guess I'm, I'm a little confused. Are the rules and regulations for the village agreement, those planning and historic preservation commission part of the zoning code or are they?
These are bylaws.
They're all separate.
So they're, so they're totally separate, so.
These are bylaws that we've adopted, we've got adopted bylaws that she's faced and changed, that's faced and changes to.
But there's an overlap between the two in terms of duties. There's things of offices. Have a way of this job. Well, maybe not. Is that your turn?
Uh-oh.
Okay.
I mean, the, the powers and duties of planning commission, do you include the historic? Um, the duties related to the historic preservation function? It seems, I mean.
You mean, just because it's, if it's part of the code?
B on page one fifty-four. B on page one fifty-four. Starts the powers and duties.
Yeah.
I mean, is there anything that?
You mean, just because the historic chapter is part of the code and it's just the power duty to carry out the code?
Right.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, well, yeah, but also, I mean, it talks about the, you know, act as liaison, have the local government, have individuals, organizations concerned with historic preservation, um, work towards continuing education regarding historic preservation. Seek expertise when the commission considers a national register nomination.
Okay, so you're reading the, the revised code.
Yeah.
All right.
So it's, it's, it's accomplished.
All right, so we got done what you were hoping to get done.
Yeah, we did. It's all in here.
Oh, good.
Yeah, it's all in here.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
I didn't pronounce it right. I did forget it, but I guess.
It's all, it's all there. It's all there.
Okay, this is.
So it is, we're, we're all together again. Okay.
As far as this documentation goes, I think you agreed on the change, the name of the planning commission or planning and historic reservation commission.
Yeah, so it needs to be revised back to the.
Back to the planning.
Not revised. Those rules stand, they exist.
Oh, I'm sorry. I meant my, my, the revised version.
Revised, revised.
I mean.
Flies and other.
And just before I go to.
Yeah, we're just going, actually, we've got, we could, yeah.
All right.
Brian, is there, are there definitions of front, side and rear yards in this code? Because I'm not seeing other definitions.
Yard.
There are, there are.
Yard.
Yard?
Side here.
Okay, good.
You, did you receive the electronic version?
Yes.
But you did, okay.
Either the planning commission or the council can initiate.
Okay, good.
The process of adopting these changes. So talking to Todd before he went out of town, um, his suggestion was, um, have the council initiate it. Uh, have us prepare a public presentation draft and a map of the Village Center district. Do the map and text amendments at the same time. Have the council initiate it and then that would, they'll send it back to the planning permission discommission for the official comment.
So the council would initiate the process.
Right.
And.
Draft, the public draft, and come back to this. Planning permission.
And how much, how much time will it take?
I don't know. I, I, I get the, I got the impression that the council meets more regularly or that they'll meet more quickly than tonight.
We have meeting day first. We can put it on the agenda. We still have to put that on the agenda, right?
Yes, do you, do you want set a date for public hearing?
To initiate, the official initiation of the, the map initiation. Text amendment process.
Okay.
Which way to follow the process that's in your current code?
Give, give me that language again so I get it corrected in minutes. Council should initiate a zone.
I think your council will initiate the zone.
Map and text amendment process.
But that's, that's. What are, what are we, okay, but, but.
Basically, what's, if you look and see if I understand this correctly, council needs to say planning commission.
Doesn't planning commission have to say to council, we're ready?
We're ready, yes, and we're ready for you.
Or is that backwards?
That's what I thought, but.
That's what I thought, but is it?
That was my original understanding, but if that's incorrect.
There's two steps. The first is to initiate the process, which I don't think has happened. I think that, that there's been a contract approved with us to prepare this. But the actual official adoption process hasn't been initiated by either council or the planning commission. And I think your current code allows either body, this body or the council, to initiate, which basically says go forward with the process. And now that process requires it to come to this commission, and then this commission makes a recommendation to council, and council acts.
Right.
Okay, so.
But it doesn't matter who initiates it, and the public hearing would be before this commission still.
Right, there's, there's a public hearing before the planning commission, and the planning commission takes that feedback, incorporates what feedback they see fit into the document, and then approves it to council.
Right, yes.
And then council has to hold a public hearing.
Correct, correct.
Right.
And then.
So there's two sets of public hearings.
Right, one before the commission, one before council.
So we need.
So this initiation phase seems like a formality.
Right.
But a necessary formality.
Right.
So we need.
Is it necessary?
Yes.
So we, we need to set the date then for our public hearing with the planning commission to.
Well, we can.
Can, yes, right.
We can, because council can initiate their.
Do you have the current date?
Uh, can we get it on the edit?
What do you want?
But, but that's right, I just read it before we get to speed.
Okay.
You're absolutely right, so this got formally initiated.
And then it requires.
Is there a reason why you thought it should be council, or you just mean?
Because it can happen faster, I think. But it's the only reason, if you don't want, I mean, if this, if you want this commission to initiate it, you'll still have to initiate it, and then at a separate hearing, you'll have to consider it, maybe that's why.
Oh.
Right, so Tuesday.
An action to initiate it, and then at that time, you send a public hearing order.
Well, then, so you're saying we should, it would be best to wait till the council meeting and ask that they.
We have a council meeting six days from tonight, right, May first. Can the coun, council initiate the, the zone map and text amendment process, and at the same time call for a hearing on a certain date for, to satisfy the, uh, planning commission? Public hearing, or no? I don't want to do something that's not appropriate, but if that helps the process move faster, can we do?
Well, I think you guys should still agree on a date to have a public hearing, and just have council initiate the process, and, you know, provide the date of the planning commission hearing, and, you know, figure out the council meeting that would immediately follow that, that date, and say that tentatively scheduled to be heard by, say, to be heard by the planning commission on X date, and tentatively scheduled to be heard by council on X date, the date. Some date after that, so everybody in the room, there's the initiated, and here's the dates of the public hearings, and everybody understands what's going on. But I don't think there's any notice requirement for initiation. Go be for the public hearings.
Right, just for the public hearings.
And, and the public hearing has a minimum of ten days.
Uh, ten days for this body, thirty days for council.
Alright, everybody grab your calendars, let's take a look. When does the planning commission, which did commence their public hearing?
Has to be at least ten days out, so, I mean, to, to notice.
When, when's the council, council's May first.
May first, so it's got to be ten days past May first, minimum, it should be a Friday, so the following, the fourteenth, starting the fourteenth, May, I'd be earliest, we probably have it.
And if you want to, do you want to try and get a notice in the journal?
Yeah.
Okay, except for now on the fourth.
Yeah, that, that, it needs, it needs to go in, and, you know, I mean, Georgia comes out on Friday. Georgia Stroup will be here Tuesday night, and, and will, whatever you tell her, I, I tell her before.
Yeah, what's their deadline if it comes out on the fourth?
Right.
It's probably this Friday.
Well, their official deadline is Friday, but Georgia's going to kind of cover our council meeting on Tuesday, and if she's got anything to put in the paper, it'll go in the paper Tuesday night, and it'll come out when the paper comes out. What about the, what about the, the tenth, fourteenth? Oh, you're saying tenth, oh, what about the fourteenth or fifteenth, the fifteenth?
It's council meeting.
Not the fifteenth, the May?
Yeah. It is.
Oh, it's your work session.
Yeah.
I, I cannot do it fifteen, fifteen, I can do sixteen, seventeen, eighteen.
Sixteen through seventeen, excuse me.
Does it help to have the Wednesday, Monday, or doesn't it matter?
Well, I don't know, Todd's going to go to the meeting anyway, so.
Or some days that Todd couldn't. And Todd couldn't do, I think he's not going Tuesdays, right?
I don't know, I don't know, I'm familiar with Todd's evening. He's got something always on Tuesday night, I'm not sure. I don't have anything on sixteenth or seventeen, so Todd can't do it.
Threatening. Well, you know, I've got something on sixteenth and seventeen that I could, well, either move or just cancel. What about the twenty-first?
I'm shocked at that. And I'd like to, if possible, try to keep this process rolling.
Yeah, if you've taken a break, and, you know, the sixteenth is fine, you can deal with the sixteenth.
It's fine.
It's alright.
Um, hold on just a sec, because there's one thing that we have no representation at tonight that's pretty important, it's going on with the school districts' facilities planning for future. We don't have any other future dates, do we?
So, Monday the fourteenth is out of the question, Tuesday the fifteenth is the council meeting, Wednesday the sixteenth.
I can do sixteen for this.
Wednesday the sixteenth, let's put that as our prospective date then.
You think you can get something in the paper on the fourth?
Absolutely.
Let's do seven. Or do you want to do six?
This will make a lot of diff.
At least you did eat dinner.
Yeah.
Seven P M on the sixteenth, May.
I, yeah, I, I prefer that.
Where?
Right here.
Here.
It's the public hearing, right?
I guess we'll be big enough. I, you know, I don't really anticipate there being thousands of folks, but if there are, um...
You just flat out never know, do you?
I, I would, um... Hey, Jim? What do you say to him? What do you want to do, download or what?
I think.
What about the out of toilet to the white building? We're not going to do that.
Are you seriously thinking what has more people that would fit into this room?
I don't.
I don't.
That's a positive.
I think this room would suffice, like, I can't imagine that we would need.
No, we line them up outside.
But when they hear about the RV thing. I'm thinking about the chicken.
The chicken.
They clamor them for years, they're urban hag babies.
Never know.
I don't think that, I just said.
So there you are, is, council's going to have to have a little thing on their agenda to initiate, portal initiatives, initialization of the process, or Initiation of the process. What the heck does the language for that look like, anybody have?
I mean, if there's a four no, Mark to Jeff, you can just get Jeff in there.
Just get something for our.
We'll, um, we'll try and make the changes that we agreed on tonight as fast as possible, if there's something that, a definition that we can't find, we will do our best, get everything to you by Friday.
Because we want to put it up on the website.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Yeah.
It needs to be, it needs to be on the website, and I, I like it on the website at or before the time the council starts the initiation process, so people can see the posing of the zone map, and can read.
Yeah.
The, um, the document.
Do you want to put, like, public hearing drafts on the.
Yeah, they'll say public hearing draft on it for sure, yeah.
I think it'll be clean with no changes shown.
Okay, good, sounds like awesome.
All those sheets have draft copy on them, something, when they, when they print it out, they know it's, it's marked, okay?
Alright, folks, we've been here almost two hours.
For construction.
Yeah, so we got, got, done what we need done?
I think so.
Did I make a motion to adjourn?
All the way across the diagonal.
Meeting adjourned at seven fifty-five.